There we go. I think it saves the settings under the planning account, but I'm switching to town hall account right now.
Right.
And it, there's no save settings for that. So I've got to go back and put in the planning board. Livestream, it looks like it's working. Okay.
All right. So you think it's live streaming right now?
I think it says it, yes.
All right, let me go on my phone, I guess, and see. All right, so if I go planning board May 6. Click to watch the live video, I should see something, right? Let's see. So right now I only see it as your screen, so do you not have it set up as gallery?
It says attendee view is gallery view.
So it's only the speaker view right now?
When I go to view, my view says gallery view and the attendee view says gallery view.
Okay, you know what, maybe on clerk base. It's this way. Although I thought it was gallery view usually. Well, it's fine. It's streaming, so that's good. Although I don't. I'm just wondering why it wouldn't be, if I'm the speaker, if I'm speaking right now, why does my screen not show up?
Colleen, do you have it on speaker view or gallery view on your computer? Click in the upper right-hand corner.
No, no, it's on gallery. No, I'm thinking about, I'm on my, I'm also watching it on my phone on clerk base to see if people, not on Zoom, but just someone's, you know, clicked on. Clark Base. And right now it just says Jay Parker, Principal Planner. Zoom. So it is live, right? So you are streaming, so you're good. It's just the view. I can't figure out why, but it also could be I'm on a mobile device, so. That could be too, I don't know.
I'm just going to check something, I'm going to mute my, Colleen, keep talking. I'm going to mute my microphone so I don't get feedback when I play the streaming on the, on the clerk.
Okay. So yeah, so right now it looks like. I don't know, Steve, are you muted? I can't see that, that's weird on Steve.
I'm not muted.
And it's funny, I don't see. Oh, I guess. Yeah, okay. So you're not muted. I'm not muted. Jay is muted. And Paul Jordan's here as well, so, and he's muted.
I'm unmuted. Jamie Rabbit has his hand up in the attendees list, not the, not the panelists.
I got him.
Hi, Steve Horry.
Good. For some reason it was fro, it's frozen on my screen on the streaming on clerk base.
Oh, now you're good. So now I see Paul Jordan, okay. And Steve, so you're all good. And I think, you know, what it is, is what is that called? Like my video's off, right? So. And Jamie's video was off, and so we don't. What is that called? We don't see non-video participants on clerk base.
We're not just good, we're the best. Maria likes to hide in the, in the tall grass back there.
Yeah, so I think I would probably pop up in a second. All right, so you're good, so let me stop.
Yeah, you're, you're good.
So I'm going to, you want to make me an attendee, because I'll, I'll hang out and watch, but you don't need me in your meeting. Right? You're good?
Um, let me see, remove co-host permissions, maybe?
Oh, maybe I am as a co-host, huh?
Oh. Yeah, I can't. I can't kick you.
Oh, that's good to bed.
I can, I can remove you.
Yeah, then I can't, then I can't. Honey, I can't go to, be, make myself an attendee.
If I.
You know what? No.
I can, if you just mute yourself and shut your camera off, I can hide non-video participants and.
You know what, I'm going to leave, right? I'll leave this, and I can just listen to you guys on on clerk base if I want to pop back on. I don't, certainly not going to speak, right? Let me just leave and then you'll be good. But you have my number J, if something comes up that you need me, just give me a text.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Susan, how are you?
Hey, Susan.
Good.
Hi.
What a beautiful day.
Jay, are we expecting everybody?
As far as I know. Agenda went out to everyone. Only. I might have only spoken to one or two board members since the email went out.
Peter should be on listening. His video may not be on, but he will, he plans on attending.
Okay, thank you. This is Peter.
How you doing, Steve?
Good, yourself?
I'm pretty good, man, thanks.
Looks like you have a nice view behind you.
Yeah, I'm pretty lucky. Could be in the backyard, yeah.
Pretty good. Susan's out in her sunroom, so she can at least see the outside. I'm buried in a man cave.
And Maria, Maria's a mystery.
She's at Town Hall.
Just me.
I think she was born there.
Although Amy has a nice background also.
Yeah.
Flowering tree and shrubs.
I think that's about one year old now.
Is that office in Barrington or Providence?
In Providence, right on South Main Street, right across from Dave's Coffee.
Well, it might look nice, but I wouldn't want to commute.
I gotta say, I'm really, really looking forward to driving down to South Kingston again.
Well, it's six o'clock. Are we waiting for? Rob?
Yes, he should be logging on.
Okay. There he is. You want to get started, Jake?
Yeah, you're all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is Town of South Kingston. It's a planning board, a special meeting. The date is Thursday, May 6, 2021. First item on the agenda is roll call. Maria Mack.
Here.
Joseph Murphy. Absent. Paula, excuse me, Pam Rubenoff. Absent. Peter Di Stefano.
Here.
Susan Axarod.
Here.
And Paul Jordan.
Yeah.
And for staff, we have Brian Wagner, Jay Parker, Jamie Rabbit. Legal counsel, Amy Gomes, and town manager, Rob Zineski. So I'll open it up to Mr. Rabbit.
So, Ms. Chairman, thank you. I will share my screen. And I hope everyone can see that. Is that coming through to everyone?
Yes, Jim.
So, Ms. Chairman, purpose of the meeting tonight for the planning board is to hold a listening session. I have on the screen the agenda as posted, which was a welcome by Steve Demasi, overview of the comprehensive plan by Jamie Rabbit and Amy Gones, listening session, which is the primary focus tonight of anyone in the audience to comment or pose questions, and then next steps. For Amy, and then an opportunity for closing remarks from both the Vice Chairman, Maria Mack, and the Chair, Steve Demasi.
Okay.
Walk our way through that. So Steve, I don't know if you had any opening remarks?
No, I think we'll get right into it. The council asked us to have a listening session due to feedback during their open meeting, that they had their public hearing on the draft of the comp plan. Apparently, there were some people that felt there wasn't enough public input. So the town council suggested that we have a listening session. So that's what we're here for tonight. We're here to to listen to public comment. And then we'll have the planning board and the staff will report back the results of that to the town council.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, overview is the next item on the agenda, so I'm just going to jump down a little bit. Ms. Chairman, I have a presentation. It's maybe between 18 and 20 slides. It's similar to the presentation that the planning board and town council saw in a joint meeting in March, as well as a follow-up presentation in April, the first public hearing that the town council held. With regards to the draft 2021 Comprehensive Community Plan, every municipality in Connecticut, in Rhode Island, is required to have a comprehensive community plan. It's covered under Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 45-22-2, Rhode Island Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Act. The primary purpose of the Comprehensive Community Plan is to serve as a valuable community tool to guide decision-making, provide direction for development, and encourage economic, social, and environmental sustainable community growth. A good plan is thoughtful, comprehensive, contains goals, policies, and actions, and protects the community vision and strengthens every step. Following through on the law, there are key features to the act, which include the preparation and adoption of a single comprehensive plan that needs to be updated not less than every 10 years. Your horizon for forecast goals and policies are looking forward on a 20-year horizon. The process includes public input and comment. It is actually required by the law. The comprehensive plan is to serve as the foundation for the community's municipal zoning. The plan needs to be reviewed by the state to ensure consistency with the provisions of the act and consistency with other state agencies and other state approvals. With regards to the comprehensive plan, state programs as well as town programs need to be consistent with the town's effective community comprehension. The efforts on the South Kingston's community plan have been in effect since January 2007. Over that time period, the planning board has worked to develop new elements with regards to natural hazards and climate change, including energy, to refine the goals and policies and implementation actions identified in 2014 plan. To update the data points, those are, in essence, the data points of social and economic and census data, and improve the document with regards to formatting, standardization, including each element and identifying themes. The 2014 plan. I'm just going to catch up to my slides, had 10 chapters or 10 sections. They were an introduction, land use, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources, services and facilities, open space and recreation, circulation, University of Rhode Island, and an implementation schedule. The draft 2021 Comprehensive Community Plan contains 14 elements, sections or chapters. They're referred, referred to different ways by many. There are, in essence, three new sections as compared to the 2014 plan. There is a section or element on citizens. There's a section on natural hazards and climate, and there's a section on energy. The plan's 14 elements contain, each one individual element contains six subsections. Those all include a vision statement, goals, guiding principles, current practices, and baseline information, needs and opportunities, policies and actions plans. And again, those six subsections are part of each of the 14 elements. This, this slide gives you a quick comparison between the 2014 on the left, which had those 10 elements, and the 14 elements on the right. State statute changes between 2014 and 2020 actually require two of these new sections, which are, in essence, deal with climate change and an energy section. Citizens was an expansion and breakout of the former 2014 plan's introduction. It should be noted also that there were a couple of shifts in the categories. Cultural Resources was moved and combined with Historic Resources in the 2021 plan. Natural Resources was also combined with Open Space in the 2021 plan, and Open Space was removed and put with Recreation. So there was a little bit of reformatting from 2014 to 2021 to create those 14 new elements. Again, three new elements as part of the plan, citizens, natural hazard and climate change, and energy. Citizens, in essence, is the social, economical, and demographic section of the, of the plan. It identifies who and what social, economic, and demographics are associated with the people who live in South Kingston. The demographic data affects how we assess the needs of the community, helps us develop policies and actions that are needed to progress towards the goals. The chapter does not contain goals and policies and action items, instead gives a summary of who makes up the community. The 2017 population for South Kingston was approximately just over 3,000 persons. The future projections developed by Rhode Island Division of Planning anticipates growth by 2040 to upwards of 38,000 or a 25% increase. Understand that US Census was done in 2020. Those numbers will slowly be populated, and they will let us know whether that projection in that 30,000 range is accurate or not. Again, last census numbers were based on 2010. Anything beyond the 2010 census was a projection. I know there was public comment prior to this that the actual population of South Kingston is influenced by the influx or fluctuation in the enrollment at the University of Rhode Island. The citizens' plan does contain a section that actually discusses the influence of the student body on URI. If you kind of broke it down in larger numbers, there's roughly 24,000 residents of the community, and there's roughly 6,000 students that make up the student population. Those numbers slide to the left and right regularly. The population of South Kingston is identified as aging. The population and employment rates are relatively stable. Medium household income in South Kingston is significantly higher than Rhode Island as a whole and modestly higher than the surrounding Washington County. Again, the University of Rhode Island population influences those numbers, so again, you could be, in essence, at the higher realm within Washington County, if you take out that student population. With regards to the element associated with natural hazards and climate, we are realizing that South Kingston is vulnerable to storm events and natural hazards, that there is an increase overall in precipitation. There is a recorded element with sea level rise. We also are aware that the frequent storms and intensity of those storms occur more often, and that the other symptoms of climate change are affecting the community as it relates to the shoreline. And this section was designed to work in conjunction with the town's existing hazardous mitigation plan. This section establishes high-level priorities in improving resiliencies and reducing impact on events in order to deal with the community's vulnerability as it relates to the storm events and sea level rise. The primary goals are, one, that South Kingston will be resilient to the impacts of natural hazards and climate change, and two, that the carbon emissions generated within the municipality will be reduced through energy consumption and associated with heating, cooling, and transportation. One of the newer components as required by Rhode Island law is energy. The section of South Kingston's municipal energy uses and opportunities to reduce energy consumption and utilizes more sustainable energy sources. Vision for responsible, well-planned energy generation include renewable energy systems. There are three goals associated with this section. Well-planned, diverse, and economical viable renewable energy production facilities should exist in appropriate areas of town. Energy consumption in municipal buildings, vehicles, and equipment should be reduced, and understanding that town staff and community members should engage in energy-efficient practices, and renewable development should increase. With regards to there's an element within the plan that has a future land use map. There was a discussion within the plan about the development of a gateway special management district. A section of the commercial neighborhood CN Zone located at the intersection Route 138 and Route 1. Considerations have also been made on how to determine allowable future uses of land owned by the town as it transitions out of public realm due to obsolescence. Just want to take a moment on the gateway special management district. There are, in essence, 12 references within the Comprehensive Community Plan to Gateway. And they're associated with Gateway Visitor Center at URI, gateway elements associated with the intersections of Route 1, 138, and Minister Road, and gateway associated with 138 and Route 1 as being the entry point into the community. Gateway is a term or terminology used to describe the entry into the community in certain locations. It's not designed as a specific zoning code or achievement area, but there are references as it relates to the Gateway Special Management District that in recognition that certain areas, Route 1 and 138 are special, that the Comprehensive Community Plan makes suggestions that you look at increasing provisions within your zoning code as it relates to design standards, compliance or compatibility with the surrounding areas, and developing standards to ensure that any type of development that would occur in these areas is compatible, village-like, and relates to what South Kingston is about. It is not focused on the commercialization of these areas in a typical strip mall-type magnitude. There are also some recommendations about industrial mixed-use areas on the future land use map that were identified in order to acknowledge their diversity of uses occurring within these districts and to encourage their future uses by dynamic spaces for manufacturing, recreation offices, etc. Some of these areas are located in West Kingston. There's also a discussion on neighborhood commercial or the CN Zone. There's a section on Route R20 residential zone, the south of Old Tower Hill Road and Commercial Highway that is identified as an area where small-scale commercial uses could be allowed. Again, these are, you know, flying at 10,000 feet, recommendations to evaluate further, but they're not promulgating the necessity to make changes unless the planning board and town council sees them as viable goals. The other bullet is there's a section R20 along the Route 138 corridor in West Kingston, depicted on the future land use map as commercial neighborhood. There are a number of existing commercial businesses that operate as non-conforming uses, and the potential to change this would maybe give those businesses more flexibility to order, to be able to strive and survive, and is also look at art-based industrial uses within that village plan. There were some comments during the two public hearings or joint meetings between the planning board and town council, as well as some comments during the last public hearing with town council about the timeline and how much time the planning board has actually spent on this. The next two slides, this one and the preceding one. Sorry, following one, not preceding one. Kind of develop a timeline. As I mentioned earlier, the planning board has been working on this since 2017. You've conducted more than 11 planning board work sessions. You've had two advisory subcommittee meetings in 2017, and you have three advisory reviews. In 2018, you had six planning board work sessions, one planning board committee meeting, one advisory review. You also had a change in the director of the department, and you moved from Chelsea to interim, which was Kayla. In 2019, you worked on formatting and design review. You had a 30-day written public comment period. You had a public hearing. And you also moved Kayla from interim director to new planning director. In 2020, you continued to work on format design, and then we had this thing called the global pandemic, COVID-19, which changed the operations of the town hall and the functionality of the commission because you went to a Zoom-based format versus meeting in person. In the summer of 2020, you had a interim director named, because Kayla, right, resigned to move to Burlington, Vermont for a new position. I came on board in September. In November, the planning board approved the draft Comprehensive Community Plan. In December, we continued to make final edits as directed by the planning board, and you made the referral to town council. In 2021, we kind of worked through those final edits and delivered a draft plan to town council. In February, town council began to review that document. In March, there was a joint meeting between town council and the planning board. In April, the town council held its first public hearing. And May, you're holding a listening session, May 6, and the public hearing that was held in April was continued by the town council to May 24 for the second round of public comments or the second formal public hearing. Within that timeframe, you've held 15-plus public meetings. You've had over 240 people subscribe to the Planning Department Comprehensive Community page. You've had 50 people attend a kickoff meeting way back in 2017. You've had, you had 100 people attend a open house in 2017. You had 50 people attend a workshop in 2018. Your public comment period was kept open in 2019 because as a planning board, you felt the 30 to 35 days that you initially planned for public comment wasn't sufficient, and you kept that hearing open for public comment for almost 90 days. The planning department during this entire time maintained the webpage. The planning department during this entire time maintained the webpage throughout the process. There are recent presentations or video clips between the planning board and town council joint meeting. Have been posted on the planning department's webpage. Our PowerPoint presentations have been posted on the town's webpage. And the draft plan has been posted that the commission worked on as subject of the public hearing since November 2019. Final draft plan was posted in February 2021. And that's where we are today. So I know Amy Goins is in the audience, a special legal counsel to the planning board. And I will turn that over to her at this time, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jamie. And go ahead, Amy.
This is Amy Goins, Special Legal Counsel Assistant Town Solicitor. I don't have anything to add at this time. I'll speak a little bit later regarding next steps. I would note if anyone has any questions about the comprehensive plan legally. I am happy to answer questions as well, but I think we're all here to listen from the public. So let's, let's move on from this, this introduction. I don't have anything to add. That was a very comprehensive overview.
Okay, thank you, Amy. And Jamie, was Rob Sinuska going to come in and facilitate the?
Yeah, Rob and I are available to facilitate it. Jay's working online in the background with my, with me showing my PowerPoint presentation right now. And looking at the commission, the board members, I cannot see the people in the audience, so I will rely on Jay.
Okay, looks like we have 17 attendees, so.
Seventeen attendees. Again, Mr. Jim, with 17 attendees in there, I think it would be pertinent if, as each people spoke, that we tried to run maybe a four or five-minute timeframe on the speakers. And then run through that list of people who want to comment and speak. And then come back through that list. You know, five times 14 is well over, that's a, you know, well over an hour.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And if we have extra time, we can, if anybody wants to talk again, we can allow that.
So I will say this, I know we do have one attendee. Jay, if Susan Marcus is in the audience. And if she has her raised hand raised, I know she does have a EDC Economic Development Commission meeting tonight at 5:00, 7:00 PM.
Okay, so maybe we can start with her, Rob. So Jamie, Jamie, this is Rob. Are you going to take your screen down at this point or?
I can take my screen down at this point. There we go.
All right, so the floor is now open. There we go, there's Susan Marcus's hand. Jay, if you can bring Susan in.
Susan, you're all set. It looks like you're unmuted and you're ready to go.
Okay, I'm not going to say very much. I just want to say I'd like to see this plan get finished. I've looked at it again and it's getting ever more out of date. I am concerned about several things about this. Jamie touched on the gateway issue. I don't like some of the language about it, but perhaps it's too late to be worrying about those things. So I think, I think my, my comment really is, I hope we've learned from this process how not to do this. And I realized there was the unexpected event of COVID, which did throw a wrench in the way this was proceeding. But I think even by the time COVID started, we were in a bad place. Because we got with this document into the format of it before we had really finalized the content of it. And I think that was, that's the main thing I want to say is I think going forward, which if anybody has any strength to deal with the next comprehensive plan, which I think we're almost ready to start. I would hope we could do, I would hope we could figure out a way to have some better interaction between and among the planning board, the planning department and those people in the community who are interested and in participating in this process and willing to devote substantial amounts of time to it. It was very frustrating to have, to make comments, to not see them reflected, to have this awkward situation where they had to be talked about in formal sessions. And I would, it was just, I hope there can be some revision of the way it proceeds. But otherwise, I think the better part of valor is to send this document as quickly as possible to the state. Having said that, I do think the letter on the introduction needs to be rethought. I sent in comments to you today, Jamie and Jay, saying that I think the second line in the first paragraph is should just come out. It doesn't reflect, I think, what the comp plan is all about. And that's, it's in contradiction with the introduction. The statement, just a few pages later on about what the comprehensive plan is. And if you want language saying what the comprehensive plan is, I'd say use that from the introduction. And then there is the issue of the fact that there's the typo in it where it says the town is the Model T. And the other thing I'd just like to point out about the gateway is that if you look at what it says about the gateway on about page 54, the gateway, the one I'm talking about at the moment is Route 138 and Route 1. If you look at that part, if you look at that part of the highway and compare it to some of the maps, I sent a list of maps showing where there are scenic areas, where there are forested areas, where there are agricultural areas. That whole area up there at that intersection is, is dense with scenic, undisturbed forested area. And I think it would be a real pity if we ended up commercializing that in a way that could lead to what we've got at the moment, which is underutilized commercial activities that are very visible from a now declared scenic highway. And I would hope we have learned as a community that when we have a valuable resource, like a scenic entry. I remember there was a last, the previous town council, there was someone who said every time she drove back from Providence or something and she hit that point, 138 and Route 1. She heaved a sigh of relief to be back in South Kingston. And she could feel it by just looking out the window that she was in a different and a special place. I just like to say, I hope we can preserve that. I don't think any amount of special management oversight, design regulations will help unless they say it's completely invisible from the road. In which case perhaps it would be fine, but then it would be situated in areas that are scenic or currently unforested. So that's, I, I also made a whole bunch of comments in December. And if any of those, they were more specific. And if any of those can be addressed in the final editing, I would be grateful, but otherwise I have nothing else to say. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Susan. Jay, I would say, do we have another member of the audience who has their, I see one hand raised potentially?
Yes.
Susan, it looks like you're unmuted. You are, you have the floor.
Wonderful. Thank you. One Susan after another Susan. First of all, thank you for being here. I appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I, I have a couple of things to say, but I want to second what Susan just said about Route 1. I remember years ago when I would go to the town council meetings many times, et cetera, on the other councils about the 138 Route 1 commercial property. It was rebuilt. And I remember saying, and it was very cute, even my 10-year-old son spoke about just the importance of when we do build, to please build it to make it look like South County. And that remembering that every time we do something, that it's going to be here for hundreds of years. And so just to be conscious of that. I was trying to remember the Iroquois quote about seven generations. When we are trying to do something, just think about our children and our children's children. But what I also wanted to say was, I feel like I'm somewhat of an involved community member. I receive the agendas. And I must say that sometimes the agendas are very clear. And then other times they take me to different sites and it's not so clear. But I did not hear about this meeting. And I haven't received a lot of information about the comprehensive plan. Even though perhaps maybe you have let people know through the years. I have not received things. And I just keep thinking, when we have a thunderstorm, we get information. When we have, oh, the COVID shots, we get information. And just, this is such an important plan for South County that why can't you send out information in a better way to our voters in order to make comments? I, I think that, I'm hoping that many of you were so surprised at the vote for the high school. You know, it was such a huge majority that one, and so that how are you, how are we really taking stock in how we're thinking? Is this what the majority of our town is thinking? And so yes, how to get it out to people in a better way. And if I didn't hear about it, how many other people haven't heard about it? But with that said, I do appreciate all the work that you do do. And I wish I could be more involved. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Susan. You have your hand raised again?
She just took it down.
I might have done that.
Okay. Please raise your hand if anybody would like to make comments.
Jamie Murdoch has raised his hand. Hi, everybody. Jamie Murdoch. I live in South Kingston on Greenwood Drive. I know it's not a hearing, but I forgot. I, I was involved in 89, 90, 91, the original comp plan. And remember the development of special management districts. Each one described as to have a master plan. And that master plan would guide design and aesthetic standards. It was in the goals of the 91 plan. It's, those goals have been carried forward. Those master plans were never developed. And as I look at, say, goal three on page 63 of the draft. Goal three, high standards of development will be required to preserve and enhance the quality of life to encourage a sense of community, to support a healthy, walkable environment and to protect the natural resources of the town. And in the action, say, action 323, explore development of a special management district to include the commercial neighborhood zoning district at the intersection of Route 1, 138. To recognize this area as a gateway. Such special management district may establish design standards and opportunities for appropriately sized expansion of commercial uses based on clear performance standards. I've been reading aspirational language like this for decades now. And many of you, you know, are newer than, than that. And I, I, I kind of point to maybe an institutional or systemic problem where these master plans and these design standards just don't get done. They don't get created. They don't exist. And the Route 1 special management district was all farmland when that was created. And the master plan was to be in place. Now it's fully built out and master plan never existed. And so everything was, was taken ad hoc. So what, what's to be different this time? What, what is, you know, instead of pointing at people? Because it's probably not a people problem. Is it a budget problem? Is it, is it a lack of, of executive functioning? You know, what is it with my town government where they describe, you know, high standards of development will be required, but they're, they're not because the, the tools, the mechanisms that require them didn't get developed. I don't know why. I, I don't say there's an agenda to that. It, it doesn't matter. They just didn't get developed. And therefore, everything is done piecemeal. As, as it comes along with people like me, you know, pointing at the words of the comp plan. But it'd be better to point at words in zoning ordinance and master plans. And where, where it's, it's in, it's in the code. So what's different this time? And why, why create special management districts? If it's just words in the comp plan that don't actually get used.
Okay, thank you, Jamie.
That's a question.
This is just the listening. Would you, would shake in public comment tonight?
What do you do with these comments?
They'll be discussed with the planning board and the planning staff and forwarded to the town council. And then the town council has the final say on the comprehensive plan. Do you have anything else to add tonight?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Thank you again for your time.
If anyone else in the audience would like to comment or speak, please feel free to raise your hand.
Susan, whoops, sorry, Susan. I promoted her to panelist by accident. Sorry about that, Susan.
So am I unmuted?
You are unmuted. Yes, my apologies. I promoted you to panelist by accident.
Okay. I just want to say bravo to Jamie. Those were very well said statements. That is, it's so clear that we keep asking, we keep being told we're going to have these standards. And therefore, things will be developed as per our instructions for all the work we go through on these comprehensive plans. That things will follow the ideas that we set out in them. And then those plans are not developed. And then when a developer comes, we don't have those guidelines to provide. I congratulate him on being so succinct. Please remove me as a panelist and good night again.
Will do, Susan. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Susan.
We have a new speaker. Raise their hand, Katie Collins.
Caterie, if you can unmute. Here you go. Real set. Caterie, you are unmuted, so if you can. So Caterie might be having difficulties. Caterie, if you can give me a call. At the, she just unmuted herself again. She has permission to talk, so.
Steve and Jay, can we maybe come back to her? Once she figures out the technical difficulties?
Looks like she just muted herself again. Mr. Murdoch has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Jamie, looks like.
Hi. In the gateway, the new gateway SMD. Can, I noticed you're looking to rezone our twenty-two commercial neighborhood. And also some non-conforming uses is that, I, I think I understand that. If, if design standards are to be imposed, could the rezoning from our twenty-two commercial neighborhood be delayed until those design standards are enforced? So that we don't have immediate development projects? Go into these right now, you know, uses that aren't allowed, but that would not be regulated by what is being stated in the plan? And just basically develop the design standards that are promised? And then open up new property to those, within those zones, so that it is developed in the way that is stated in the plan?
Ms. Chairman, if I can just try and, Mr. Murdoch, that statement concise that Mr. Murdoch would only be in favor of rezoning if stringent architectural and design standards were developed in association with any zone change, that if any zone change occurred, there should have those provisions included in the language.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch.
Anything else, Jamie?
Well, what, the non-conforming uses on Route one? What's the rationale of not, of just keeping them? Why not just keep them fixed as, as the use they are instead of? I mean, somehow they, they were allowed once upon a time. For example, the gas station that's now a parking lot for oil trucks. That, you know, it is what it is. That landowner bought that with that non-conforming use, knowing exactly what it is and perhaps on speculation of turning it into something else. But we, we don't owe that. We don't owe that to them. And so what's the rationale of just opening that up for strip commercial growth, which is what that would be if it's just curb cuts on Route one?
Thank you. That's it, thank you. If anybody else would like to speak, please raise your hand. Caterie Collins is back. Caterie, you are unmuted. Jay, would she be able to call in?
She can call in using the agenda from the numbers posted on the agenda. I was just going to, you know, let it, everybody know. I, now that we are back full time at Town Hall, I no longer have my office phone forwarded to my cell phone. So I don't get direct calls.
Jay, I'll offer an opportunity. If she could email me at j rabbit, R A B B I T T at south kingstownri.com and leave me her phone number. I will call her and put her on speakerphone. Again, J rabbit, R A B B I T T at south kingstownri.com.
We have some other attendees out there that are listening. We'd love to hear your input on the comprehensive plan. Planning board struggles to get public comment. We've, you know, as Jamie mentioned earlier, we've had numerous meetings. We've had correspondence times that we've left open. We need input. And this is what we're here for tonight. And we would hope that some of you in the audience would speak up whether you're in favor of it or against it or have suggestions. We'd love to hear.
All right, Ms. Chairman, I do have a number.
Okay.
So if you bear with me, I will try and get her on speakerphone.
Hello.
Hi, Caterie. If you may have your microphone on, so if you mute that now.
Let me, I'll step away from the computers, that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just, thank you, I was having trouble obviously with the computer. I just wanted to back up on both Jamie and Marcus's comments. The years I've attended comprehensive plan meetings. And when I read through the comp plan, a lot of it just seems fabulous. And I think, well, I want to live in a town like that. And I just think the implementation has been. So my question tonight would be, or my comment, I guess, would be to add, if it doesn't already exist, some sort of mechanism that can assess in a, in a timely manner the implementation and the success of implementation. But I guess that's all my comment today. I'm particularly interested in transportation issues. And in particular, when we're considering our environmental impact, how do we reduce our carbon footprint by encouraging biking and walking? And creating more of a, you know, infrastructure that supports that. So thank you for listening and I apologize again about the difficulty.
Thank you for that email that allowed you to speak tonight.
Thanks for being flexible. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, if there's any members of the audience as an attendee who would like to speak, we would appreciate if you would raise your hand. Okay, I think we just had. Kristen Blaney. Go ahead, Kristen.
Hello, I think I just unmuted myself. There we go. How y'all doing tonight?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it. I was actually hanging back in the comments because honestly I expected there to be probably a lot more people on this call, so I'm a little surprised. But anyhow, I'm, I'm in the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee. And I guess speaking just selfishly from that part of the comprehensive plan, I can really appreciate what's been put together here. I think as we are really starting to get some steam on, you know, thinking about and developing and brainstorming new ideas, this really does give us something to look back to, a framework. You know, as new pro, as new projects are coming in, as new ideas are coming in, it allows us to, to reference a document that to me says a lot about the commitment that the town is putting forth in this document for affordable housing, which is extremely important. So I appreciate the work. As far as the collaboration, I, I, I guess I'm a little confused because I feel like I've been to a ton of meetings and I think it was, was it two thousand seventeen that the kickoff was at the rec center? I think there was a hundred community members there, there were boards. It was a, it, there was a bunch of presentations. And it seemed, it seems to me that there's been a lot of collaboration and a lot of events. And COVID's been tough because for a year it's been Zoom meetings and not a lot of people like to go on the Zoom meetings. But I, I know personally, I feel like the town does a pretty good job with that. So I just wanted to make that statement. And thank you all for the hard work. I'm looking forward to the final document.
Thank you, Kristen. If anyone else in the audience would like to, please raise your hand. Ms. Helen. Helen, you can unmute yourself. You should have the floor.
Hi, I'm, I'm not Helen, I'm her husband, John. She's, she's out right now and she asked me to make some comments if I heard anything that I thought was comment worthy. How do you actually plan on addressing climate change issues in town? I'm, I'm a climate scientist. I recently retired from URI. We, we've got a couple of pretty significant problems, in my opinion, in town. If we, if we look at the two thousand and ten flooding as a kind of a foreshadowing of some things that could happen moving forward. I live in West Kingston. West Kingston was pretty much cut off from the rest of the town for a few days during that flooding. Now, I know it's not a town only issue because the bridge on one thirty-eight near Teller's Landing got whacked, so you couldn't use one thirty-eight. One-ten down toward Tucker Town had a stream running across it. The whole south end of Wardens Pond was flooded. I haven't really seen anything to indicate anybody's done anything about those specific issues. And it strikes me that a, a good process for addressing climate change would, would start to come up with in, in a, you know, a proactive way alternatives to those specific examples. Another example I can think of is, you know, the, the road by East Mattoonik right along the, the bar strip there. You know, it's got a sewer line underneath it. If, if a hurricane hits and takes out that road and that sewer line, all those houses to the east don't have any sewers anymore. I think that's probably about fifteen percent of the town's tax base. And I know that there's no easy way to have a Plan B for that sewer line, but I also know what's happening with storms and sea level rise. And you probably should start to develop a Plan B. You know, we, we're always told as climate scientists, you have to go with what could be the worst case scenario. And two thousand and ten is an example of a worst case scenario. And if, if we get a, a thirty-eight or a Hurricane Carol scenario in future, which could happen anytime, I suspect that road and that sewer line are going to be in need of addressing instantaneously. So what, what process are you going to use to actually be resilient in the face of climate change? You, you may have one, but I'm not aware of it.
Ms. Chairman, with regards to the question, again, we're, as planning board staff and staff in the community were listening this evening, we are going to summarize the statements made and make every attempt to provide answers and/or direction to where the comprehensive community plan may make statements regarding the subject matter.
The, we do have a climate section in, in the comp plan now that it is known that the state required. So that kind of gives a, a general outline of what we're going to do to look to mitigate some of those issues in the future. John, did you have any other comment?
Yeah, I think you should, you should start making a, a list because I, I could make one for you. And I'm, I'm not all really familiar with what happened in other parts of town in two thousand and ten. You know, your, you know, your, your infrastructure people probably do have such a list, but you know, your process, whatever it is, should start thinking about, okay, how do you address the specific items on that list? You know, because it's, you know, it's not going to be any surprise if similar things happen again. My, my comment is that, you know, in two thousand and ten, we got two hundred year storms within two weeks. But what that says is what, what constitutes a hundred year storm isn't the same thing anymore. And maybe the hundred year storm is now the ten year storm. And that's what most climate scientists think. And if that's the case, two thousand and ten was ten years ago. So you, you know, I haven't seen anything happen in the last ten years that I can point at and say, oh, people took that seriously. So that, that's, I'm, I'm not asking you to, to address this, but you know, I think some of the earlier comments about, okay, words on paper are fine, but you have to implement the words. And maybe that's a problem in this town.
Okay, thank you, John.
Sure. And I appreciate all the work you do. I know it's, it's hard.
Okay, thank you. Jay, was Pam going to speak? Or did you bring her in as a?
Yeah, I brought Pam in. She isn't as a panel, panelist.
Hi, Pam.
Unfortunately, I can't stay the whole time. I have another meeting and I have another one, so.
I thought you were going to make a comment on the climate change.
No, but I, I agree with John that there are several places in town that are vulnerable and we have identified several of them in the comp plan. And it would be good to have community members really help to prioritize some of those as well.
And just, just expand on that a little bit. They are also referenced in the Hazard Mitigation Plan as well. A number of action items and areas that need further study for mitigation. So they kind of piggyback along with the comprehensive plan.
And even though we're just listening tonight, I have to agree wholeheartedly with what the previous gentleman had to say. We had originally planned to have a theme of climate change throughout the entire comprehensive plan.
We still have fifteen plus people as attendees. Number are town council members. And a number are still residents within the community. So if anyone still would like to. So if anyone still would like to speak, please raise your hand and you will be identified and you can provide input. Ms. Chairman, what I may suggest is we do have a few slides left on kind of next steps and, and where we go from here and we could move to those. And then see if there's any comments on, on that remaining item as you move forward.
Sounds like a good idea, Jamie.
I will share my screen again. Everyone see that?
We can, Jamie.
Amy was going to take us through, I think, next steps.
Yes, so the comments received tonight by the board and the department will be compiled and sent to the council for review. The public hearing on the comprehensive plan before the town council has been scheduled and advertised for May 24th. It was initially opened on April 12th and continued to the 24th. So there's additional opportunity for public comment. Once, if the comprehensive plan is assumed, is approved by the council, incorporate, incorporating any changes made by the council at the public hearing, it needs to be forwarded to the state statewide planning for review and approval. I would note, once it is approved by the council and it's enacted in the same way than an ordinance is enacted, it is binding on actions by the town. It does not become binding on the state until it is approved by the state. So that means the town in taking actions needs to be, needs to follow its own comprehensive plan, even if the state approval process takes potentially a few more months. It would still be binding on the town, but it will be binding for the purpose of guiding state agency actions once it's approved by the state.
Amy, while we have some time, maybe you could just briefly touch on the interaction of the comp plan and the zoning ordinance, as there always seems to be a lot of confusion at public hearings that somebody comes in and says the comp plan says you can't do this. And, you know, the planning board is, is bound by the zoning ordinance of the town based on whatever the site or land use is.
Right, I will address that. The comprehensive plan sets forth general goals and policies. And state law assumes that it will take some time for the town to implement those goals and policies with specific regulations. So state law requires a town, once it is, once the new comprehensive plan is enacted, to amend its zoning ordinance to bring it into conformity and consistency with the comprehensive plan. Again, there is a, there's an assumption that it will take some time for the town to go through that process, right? So the comprehensive plan is the general statement of, you know, in all the different areas, what the council, the direction that the council wants the town to move in. Then it's, it's incumbent upon the planning department and the planning board to go through the document, make a list of specific changes that are required. Obviously, there's a prioritization aspect that will be needed since it's, it's assumed that there will be multiple areas of amendments required. So the zoning ordinance will set forth the specific rules that developments are required to abide by and that applications will be judged by. In the interim period, when the comprehend, between the time that the comprehensive plan is adopted by the town, approved by the state, but changes haven't been made, that's when, you know, we'll need to be careful with developers and applicants to advise them that they need to comply generally with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. But we, we will need to reduce those goals and policies to specific standards that are black and white, that are easy to follow and understand by both board members and applicants.
Thank you, Amy. Again, we're here to listen tonight. We want to take public comment. We still have 12 attendees and we'd like to hear from them.
Jay, do we have anyone else raising their hand?
I do not see any hands raised. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. I do not see any further hands raised.
Ms. Chairman, your next agenda item, not seeing any more public wishing to speak would be closing remarks by Vice Chair Maria Mack and you as the chairman.
Okay, well, if we have, we have no further public input, then we will move along on this program. So go ahead, Maria.
Thank you. I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and certainly those of you who have attended previous sessions. I think we all recognize that for varied reasons, this process has been somewhat disjointed at best. And it's important for us to not only listen, but to have a dialogue with the public. And since at this stage of the process, it is at the town council level of review, folks will have the opportunity to do so on the 24th. So I urge all of you to please come out and continue the dialogue with the town council. I think that the comments tonight were exceptionally well put and hope to hear more from everyone in the future.
Thank you. And again, as a planning board member, we have for four years struggled for, for public input. I could probably mention a half a dozen people and I, I won't say them by name in case I, I forget one or miss one. But we did have some people that before COVID started, that did regularly attend our work sessions and, and make comments as we reviewed section by section of the, of the draft comp plan. And again, we, we went by elements. We didn't just look at the whole comp plan every, every work session. We, we did it by element and, and moved through this process. But again, public input, particularly at the end of our, our efforts, we're, we're somewhat lacking. And unfortunately, it seems that nobody wants to comment on the, or the majority don't like to comment on the comp plan until it becomes before them because there's a project that's next to them or a project is being developed somewhere that they don't, wouldn't like to see it. And then all of a sudden, everybody wants to talk about the comp plan. Well, now is the time to talk about the comp plan. We need that input. As Maria mentioned, the 24th, the town council will have another hearing. But I would ask you, if you have something to say, don't wait till the 24th. Submit it to the planning department. You can CC the town council, but if you submit it to the planning department, they can provide some answers or some information, some background so that when the town council does have that next public hearing, they have that information in front of them answered, not as a question. So it'd be more helpful to have those, those comments ahead of time. But again, I want to thank everyone for this long process. And again, those who have been participating all along, we appreciate your, your input. And again, whether we agree with you or we don't agree with you, all input, all comments are important because it, it does change. A lot of people think it doesn't change our minds, but it does make its way into the wording or the sentences of the paragraphs of, of some of these ideas that have come forth. So again, thank you. Jamie, did you have anything to add? Or if Rob is still here, does he have anything to add?
Yeah, again, from my perspective, Ms. Ms. Chairman, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. I think in public involvement and input is important in any planning process. So I really appreciate on behalf of the planning department, people who have spoke, people who have sent comments to the planning board through our department. And again, we do read these, we do digest them, they are assimilated. We will take diligent notes from tonight's meeting and we will prepare some documentation to be forwarded to town council if we have answers to some of the questions posed tonight. And we can direct the council to either answer to those via the comprehensive really plan or provide additional input as staff. We will do so. We will also make those comments available to the planning board also. I think the planning board does meet one more time before the 24th. Would encourage anyone who's listening or has the ability to listen to attend that May 24th public hearing session with the town council. And I, I thank everybody who's participated in the process. I know it's been a long process for the planning board members, starting back in 2017. But you're, you're close to the finish line now.
We hope so.
The red zone, Mr. Chairman, as a football term.
Any other comments from staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Maria. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. All those in favor, raise your hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next Tuesday at our next work session.
If anyone's, Ms. Chairman, if anyone's curious, the blurry background, it is actually Main Street in Wakefield when it was horse and carriage time. The two buildings, the, and the foreground still exists today on the right and left.
That's a great background.
Yeah.
I will leave this up until 8:00 PM tonight regarding you concluding your proceedings tonight. And then if anyone who logs in this evening until eight, we will accept comments to our office.
Okay, very good. We'll see you all next week.
Night, everybody. Jamie, should I stop recording and just let? Yeah, you can stop recording, Jay.
Just let the live stream go.
Do I have co-host ability?
I mean, I, yes, uh, yes.
Otherwise, you're going to leave this screen on and log off at 8 o'clock.
That's fine. I can do that.
Want to do that, Jay?
Sure.
All right. Maria, thanks for your comments. Much appreciated. And all your hard work. All right, thanks, Jay. How's your?
Just, just to confirm, I'm going to stop recording and just let the live stream go.
Yeah, stop recording. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm better than I thought I was going to be. It was, it was, I'll tell you about it tomorrow. It was a laser procedure. They, they took some tissue and stitched, put it back together.
Okay, was it a, a two-inch cut, removal and then sketch?
No, no, in fact, they, they used a laser to, how they described staple it because they, they, it was, it would have been too difficult and too painful to stitch it, but they said with the laser, they can just tack it.
Yeah, little cauterize.
Yeah, tack it, tack it in place and I'm surprised on a, on a scale of one to 10 of how different I felt, I feel from before to after, it's probably a two or three.
Okay.
Barely feel it, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, your voice and everything, you, you would never know you had a procedure.
Yeah, I thought it was, yeah, it was minimally, minimally invasive, so.
How do you think it went tonight?
Good. Good. All right, I'm going to shut my camera off and just.
All right. I'll, I'll double check at 8:00 too.
Okay.
Thanks, bye. Hello, Steve?
Hi, how are you?
All right.
Um.